We're taking his tires, I think. Those need parts.
Good evening and welcome to the San Bruno City Council Special Meeting of November the 14th, 2023. Meeting has been called to order. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Alvarez.
Here.
Councilmember Marty Medina.
Here.
Councilmember Salazar.
Here.
Vice Mayor Hamilton.
Here.
Mayor Rico Medina.
Here. Item number three, public comments for items not on the agenda. There is nobody that is before us to speak, so we will move on to item number four, which is the study session.
Item 4A, receive a presentation on fund balances and general fund reserves as of June 30th, 2023.
We'll turn it over to our CFO.
Thank, there we go. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. My name is Nick Pegueros. I'm your Chief Financial Officer. And this evening, I'd like to provide the city council with an update on our fund balances as well as our reserves. The council may recall that we brought forward a fund balance policy recommendation for your consideration several meetings ago. And as part of that discussion, we incorporated some new elements into the fund balance policy that requires this evening's presentation to you. I'll also go into where we are in the first quarter very briefly, and then talk a good deal about the budget process for next year. So I'll start with the preliminary year-end updates. Our fiscal year ends on June 30th of each year. Roughly the first four months of each fiscal year, our staff and finance, as well as staff across the organization, is working to close the fiscal year-end books. This includes a number of accounting procedures that don't typically occur during the year. And at the end of the day, we get to an analysis of our revenue expenditures and fund balances. So just to provide some highlights, I do need to disclose here that these are unaudited. We're going through our independent audit right now, and there will likely be changes. However, order of magnitude, we are comfortable with this discussion this evening. So last fiscal year, our general fund realized revenues in excess of expenditures of $5.3 million. That was largely driven by increases in property and hotel taxes, as well as user fees in our community development department. One thing I would like to note here is that the city has a practice of carrying over general fund money, which means we enter into a contract in the previous fiscal year. Those appropriations roll over to the future year. And so this $5.3 million savings does have, $2 million of that is rolling over into the next year to continue on with those projects. Also, at the end of the fiscal year, we had just shy of $25 million in informal loans from the general fund to other funds, and we'll talk about that in a little more detail here. And then finally, once we go through all of the calculations, we have approximately $11 million, $11.9 million in reserves as of June 30. Just another disclaimer here is that all of the numbers that I'm talking about on this slide are as of June 30 of 2023. Items like informal loans and reserves will fluctuate over the course of the year based on cash flow. Moving on to our restricted revenues, some noteworthy items for last year was just shy of $45 million in benefit, community benefit payments and special purpose impact fees from the YouTube Google developments. Those were booked last year. So going into the funds that the general fund loans to other funds, we refer to these as informal loans. This is money that the general fund sort of fronts for funds other than the general fund to pay their bills. So an example that you'll see here is there are cash flows. So there's money that's loaned on a temporary basis. And then there are structural deficiencies. An example of a cash flow loan is the grants that we, or I'm sorry, the claims that we make to FEMA for the winter storms. So it's money that we've spent out. There was no money in that particular fund for the purposes of spending, but we allow for funds to go negative. And in their place, we use general fund monies. That instance occurred in three distinct funds in a material amount, and then several smaller funds in a much less material amount. One that has been on the city's books for several years now is the inter-fund loan, or the informal loan from the general fund to CityNet, formerly cable TV. As we look at our past budgets, as we look at our past financial statements, and all of our financial reports, we'll see that slowly over the past 15 or so years, CityNet has accrued a deficit in its operations. And that is that their current revenue is insufficient to cover their current expenses, not just on an operating perspective, but also perhaps most critically on the capital side. What we're recommending that the council considers as part of the budget process that I'll go through shortly is that we recognize this informal loan from the general fund to the CityNet, as well as Stormwater Enterprise Fund, as loans, as advances of monies on our balance sheet and on their balance sheet. What this will do, if the council so approves that action, is that in the future, if there are any recoveries for whatever, from whatever purpose, whether there be a revenue that we weren't anticipating in one of these two enterprise funds, that the first priority to make whole is the general fund. So this money that the general fund fronted, the hope is, is that we would be able to recover those funds at some point in the future through operating surpluses, to the extent that they may exist. As part of the, as part of formalizing these informal loans, we will be making some recommendations about how we can protect the general fund to the greatest extent possible in these areas. One item of note in the CityNet Enterprise Fund is that the fund has the land, owns the land that the facility is currently residing on. One idea might be to use that land as security, or to secure some of the loan that the general fund may make. But of course, those are future policy considerations and decisions. With respect to the Stormwater Enterprise Fund, very similar concern, expenditures exceeding revenue. However, we did take some very significant steps this year to start to shore up the revenue stream for that particular fund, most notably in the street sweeping and garbage franchise area. And then we are also working with Public Works on opportunities to work to ensure that the costs of stormwater going into various other systems, most notably the wastewater fund, that any instances where that may accrue costs to the wastewater fund, or to the stormwater fund, that that be allocated appropriately. Finally, the federal and state grants, again, that's the winter storm from this last year. We do have the claims pending with FEMA, and we should have that information here by the end of, I would say by the end of first quarter, first quarter, or sorry, end of third quarter fiscal year. Moving on to the general fund reserves, so this is a very different presentation than what I shared with council when we were looking at our general fund reserves. Effectively, the reserves are the funds that are available for the general fund reserves are all of the, is cash available, unencumbered cash available at the end of the year. Well, because of the dynamic of the inter-fund loans, we have our stated reserve balances are higher, have been higher than money available to fund the reserve. What we see here is the updated fund balance, or sorry, the updated reserve policy. We have three buckets. One is the contingency reserve, which has a target of 10% of expenditures, and the budget stabilization. In order of priority, using the $11.9 million available, we first fully funded the contingency reserve. And then, for the purposes of this presentation, took the balance and put it in the budget stabilization reserve. One thing that you'll note is that we're significantly shy of the target that was established by the fund balance policy. I would say that this is not a new situation. It's simply a change in how our reserves and the inter-fund loans, or the informal loans, have been demonstrated or portrayed in financial reports. So the $11.9 million is not an overnight change in the city's financial position. This is a situation that has occurred for many years. And what we're doing tonight is just bringing light to that so that it can help inform future financial decisions. So with that, I'll move on to a quick highlight of our first quarter. When we look at the first quarter and finance, the single most important thing that we look at is the ending balance for the prior year, which we just discussed. That's our beginning number. And then we move forward through the year with clearly our current year revenue and our current year expenditures. There generally is not a tremendous amount to report on our financials in the first quarter, but I do want to highlight a couple of items. So really, the information that you see here is more information. It's not necessarily directly correlated to our first quarter budget, however, it is correlated to our future year budgets. And as you know, we receive information sort of piecemeal throughout the year that affect our budget. Some of the great news on the revenue side is that largely due to reassessments in our commercial property evaluations, the assessed value for the city increased year over year 7.8%. Now, we don't anticipate that that will continue into the future. That was, however, there are major pipeline projects that will influence commercial growth in the future, to the extent that when those come online. On the flip side, on property taxes, we're starting to see the county assessor is taking a very proactive approach to adjusting valuations due to declines in median sale price and Prop 13 values. And so the good news about that is that it's a temporary reduction in revenue. Eventually, the money will come back to the city as property values increase over time. However, we are starting to see those adjustments, which will offset some of the growth that we see in other areas. One thing that I know the council has been, is aware of, is the significant increase in our investment income. If we look back to this time last year, our portfolio was earning about 0.8%. And, you know, the blended average of all of our investments now are closer to 2.7%. So we see a considerable increase. The reason you only see a 43%, I can't believe I just said only 43%, the reason we see a 43% increase there is that the interest earnings come in on a biannual basis. They don't necessarily tie to the quarter. And then, of course, we know on the, on the, on the sales tax side, there are challenges relative to states, to the sales tax agreements that are in place, and we are monitoring those. On the expenditure side, you may have read the headlines. There's some, there was some very positive news. I think it was characterized as positive news in Washington about the Consumer Price Index, the inflation factor that the economy is seeking, is experiencing. We have two measures. We have both our local measure, which was last reported for August to August, and that was an annualized increase of 3.4%. The data that was released today on a national level was 3.2%. The positive news there is that it did not increase at the rate that we've seen in the past. So those are good, that is all good news. Previously, this time last year, we were looking at 5% to 6% increases in costs, just core inflation. And we're starting to see this return back to a more manageable economy. And then the final thing I want to highlight is that we do have, in the first quarter, we do learn Kelpers Investment Returns for the Retirement Portfolio. They indeed did post a positive return. However, they've, even with the positive return, they didn't quite make their estimates for what they would receive this year. Kelpers assumes a 6.8% return on investments, and they earned 5.8%. I can, I'm happy to discuss with anybody Kelpers finances, but that was effectively a loss for them in fiscal year 23, because they did not make their 6.8%. Other funds, we did receive restricted community benefit, community benefit funds from a development project, a settlement agreement. We also have on the enterprise funds sewer and CityNet rate increases that took effect in July and August of this year. And those are having positive effects in achieving the objectives of raising capital for the sewer fund, as well as beginning to make headway in stabilizing the finances for CityNet. However, there's still a lot of room, a lot of place to go, a lot of room for improvement there. And then we have this evening, of course, the water rates for your consideration. So I'll jump now into how all of this information is important to staff and hopefully to the community as we move through our budget process. One of the things that City Manager and I have talked about is the importance of providing this information in a timely manner so that we have the ability to plan and incorporate some of these variables that we've discussed this evening into next year's budget process, and not necessarily hold too long. So we'll start with the, where we, what we're doing right now. We kicked off our budget, our Capital Improvement Program budget last week. Staff is hard at work, working to prepare that. Over, between now and February of 2024, we will be looking internally at doing a couple of things. First is, we will be compiling the mid-year budget update and three-year forecasts to present to council in January. We will also be working to collect information on 2024, 25 goals and priorities. And then we are also developing the City Manager's recommended budget principles. All of those elements would go to the city council at your goal setting, your goals and priorities study session, which we're tentatively calendaring for the 2nd of February. One thing, as we go through these slides, is the diamond shapes reflect city council, public meetings or city council direction or decision. So when we move into the February, March timeframe, we've already had our city council goals and priority study session. We would ask the council to adopt their goals and priorities at the meeting shortly thereafter. So that would be the meeting of the 13th. With those goals and priorities, we'd begin to prepare the CIP, for the CIP Budget Study Session and Discussion with Council on the 12th of March. You'll note here in gray, we have a couple pieces. First is that we're kicking off our operating budget. Many of the operating and capital are part of a much larger budget. However, they require very different work efforts and teams, and so they do run in parallel. Moving forward, we have the three decisions, or three actions and direction from council in the past. Those are all informing the development of our operating budget, which comes to a city council study session at the end of April for direction. Those four direction items then sort of culminate in the City Manager's recommended budget. There is a, that should be 51124 there. This is, the City Manager's budget recommendation, or recommended budget will incorporate all of the feedback and the discussions to the greatest extent possible that we've had over the past four months leading up to this point. Then we get in clearly to the budget hearing, and finally, the budget adoption at the end of the year. I think the, so I would hope that the key takeaways on the budget process and calendars, that we have multiple touchpoints scheduled for both discussion and direction from council, as well as decisions. We hope to move forward with this budget process in a way that gives us the time to focus on some of the information that you received here, you received here this evening, as well as updated information that you'll receive when we present the three-year forecast, as well as the mid-year budget update. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much for the report and the information. We appreciate it. Are there questions from colleagues at this time on the presentation, on the presentation itself? Okay. There are no members of the public wishing to speak, so we'll bring it back to council if there's any comments. There doesn't have to be, but if there are, this would be the time. Please. I'll go.
Thanks. Vice Mayor Hamilton.
So obviously, the, first of all, thank you for the presentation. And obviously, the, looking at the informal loans and all of that is, you know, it's distressing to see those numbers, but I'm glad that we're seeing those numbers, that we've, you know, changed the way that we're reporting on these, to shine some more light on it. And I really do appreciate it, because that's really important. So we really understand where we are. So regarding CityNet and its, how to deal with the situation there, you mentioned that, you know, I do like the idea of, you know, any unexpected revenues in any funds that have an informal loan, the first priority should be making the general fund whole again. But have to be realistic about, you know, are we anticipating any unexpected revenues coming out of CityNet? And I don't know if that's true. Would we expect, and this might be for the City Manager, is a discussion about CityNet, is that something we would do during the goal setting? Is that a separate meeting that we should have? Because I wouldn't want to take up our entire goal setting, talking about CityNet?
Yeah, I mean, we certainly could spend our entire goal setting talking about CityNet, which of course is not the intent. I think my hope is that perhaps when we come back to you in December, we can, if the council wishes to hear this, sort of what next steps we should look at for exploring how to, I will use the word stabilize CityNet, and that may not be the right word to use. In other words, how are we going to deal with this? What process moving forward do we look at on creating a CityNet service that is either going to work? And if it's not going to work, what do we do about that? One of the things we are about to launch is what's known as a request for interest. And this is the idea of, is there anyone out there who would be interested in working with us on either acquiring or partnering with CityNet in a way that makes us a little more fiscally smart on this? I do think that what Nick will likely come back with at the December meeting, excuse me, Mr. Pegueros will come back with at the December meeting, is that kind of washing of the money, where we are now going to reflect our books in a way that the CityNet debt disappears, but so too do our general fund reserves. Not disappear, but they drop by the corresponding figure. So we'll have a couple of steps to bring back to you. I think the council's going to have to make a, sort of a courageous decision on what do we do with CityNet. And as you know, when we did the budget this year, I believe, we had a conversation about this. And we have stabilized the enterprise with regards, this is what Nick said earlier, we have stabilized the enterprise with regards to incoming, for the year, you know, the budget's balanced, as it were. The rate adjustment helped that. The question, the problem we have is we have a $20 million hole. And trying to fill that $20 million hole, I, and I think the CFO, and frankly, by the balance of the staff here, do not see a scenario on how to do that responsibly, where the taxpayers, who are already burdened with this now to the tune of 20 million, won't be further burdened.
Got it. Great. Thank you.
Thank you. And I would say, you kind of gave the answer with, and also within a question, and for myself, yes, I would ask you to please come back with a plan on the shortfalls, what are we going to do going forward, et cetera. So yes, I would like staff, CFO and City Manager to come back with those options and presentations and information. Other comments from council? Okay. The only thing I do want to say is, and you know, you can always correct me, please feel free to, is there were some positives. Obviously, we know that we've received some community benefits from the project in South City, but also YouTube, that this is being brought forward to us now, not in June. That our deficit is not in the general fund, which is a good thing, that we put in a reserve policy back in 2013 by a prior council. The inflation has kind of stabilized. That's a positive, and a little more in the investment. And we did get about, like you said, 7% one-time tax increase. But the main thing, obviously, is the capital is what's in question, and about funding it, because everybody has what they wish and what the needs are, whether it's streetlights, which we're going to hear about, whether it's a fire station. And I would believe from hearing from my colleagues in most, all cities and communities, they're all having that same concern and that same issue, which is fulfilling the capital needs that they have or they desire. You know, it's, again, what is it? We can do anything, but we can't do everything. And I think this is one of those examples. So I just wanted to kind of summarize this, what I've taken back from what you've said and within the presentation. Anything that I maybe was off a little bit on, or did you want to say anything?
No, Mr. Mayor. The only thing I would add is that, to your point about other cities, I did receive a poll from a neighbor to the north that shares a name with the city that's hosting APEC, APEC right now, South San Francisco, that they're looking for a, they were asking cities if you have parcel taxes, which is, you know, something that clearly is indicative of a need to look for revenue streams. I'm not saying South City per se is doing that, but it is something in the finance officer world, that cities are starting to look at taxes.
Thank you. With no other questions or comments at this time, then, did you have Councilmember Alvarez? Oh, okay. We'll have, we'll take care of that. Councilmember Alvarez's mic isn't functioning.
Yes.
Councilmember Alvarez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You mentioned earlier for other funds, for the sewer and CityNet rate increase. Did we do a study of any kind of deficit for the loss of some customers due to the increase of the rate?
So specific to the, to CityNet, I would have to turn that to our CityNet Director. He and I have looked at the revenues, and yes, there was a loss of customers. However, the mix of packages that the customers purchased provided an offset to some of that loss.
Thank you.
Again, thank you very much for the report. I appreciate it. With that, we'll move on to item B, please.
Item B, conduct a study session to receive an update and provide feedback on the regulated output streetlight replacement project.
Director, please.
Good evening, good evening, Mayor, members of council. My name is Matt Lee. I'm the Public Works Director for the City of San Bruno. And while the slides are populating in front of the dais today to talk about the regulated output streetlight replacement project, and to provide an update. Tonight's item is to conduct a study session to receive an update and provide feedback on the regulated output streetlight replacement project. We recently just finalized all our alternatives analysis component of the project, and we are about to move forward into detailed design. And so we felt that today was a good time to bring this item back to council for some feedback. The purpose of the project is to determine the most efficient The purpose of the project is to determine the most efficient system to replace the remaining RO streetlights that we have within our system and to move away from an existing system that has failed multiple times in previous years. So in terms of some background, since 2017, there have been multiple outages in the past seven years, but 12 of them kind of lasted more than a few weeks. And so I wanted to kind of just go through the history of some of them for you. There was an outage in 2017 where 24 RO streetlights were converted to a parallel streetlight circuit system to address the outages. In 2018, there were outages of burned wires, failed transformers, failed photo eyes, Kyle switches, pole fires, and failed in-ground step-down transformers. And in 2021, if you guys recall, most recently, there was an outage in the Rollingwood neighborhood that affected 95 streetlights. It started in, I believe, the December timeframe, and we were finally able to effectuate a repair in February of 2022. And that's when we started the RO streetlight replacement project to try to look for efforts to mitigate this in the future. Most recently, we currently have a neighborhood that has a streetlight out since October 7th. The city and PG&E has been partnering and have worked to implement repairs on three separate occasions where they were able to identify the failed line, effectuate the repair, test this unit, and turn it back on. For each of those instances, there was failures in other parts of the line, and that required, for safety reasons, for us to shut the line down and try to identify those other failed The most recent repair happened as of yesterday. We did a day burn where we made sure that the lights were working, and then we turned them on on November 13th, which was last night, and that's when there were other areas of failure. And so now the city's continually troubleshooting with PG&E to ensure that we can turn the So in terms of our alternatives analysis for the RO streetlight project, there's a couple of options that the design team has been looking at. The first one is a parallel circuit streetlight system, which is similar to what we implemented in 2014 for those, that small RO circuit. That's essentially the modern streetlight system with parallel lines, so that if one of the streetlights burns out or has a failure, the other lights can still operate. The second option is solar-powered streetlights. Technology has evolved in the past few years in which solar-powered streetlights is an option, to be able to harness solar panels and batteries mounted on streetlights to light a street light pole at night. There was also an option three, and I went through really quickly, but it's, option three was an even newer technology, which has solar-powered lights. However, there is the capability of connecting them back to the system through PG&E so that they work kind of in a hybrid model with battery and with AC power. As the, as the design team looked through those three options, they realized that very quickly, option three, which was the AC/DC option, was not completely viable because the cost would be similar to replacing a parallel circuit, because the conduits in many of these RO systems would have to be replaced and retrenched. And so with that, they came up with an option 2A, which is a combination of a solar-powered and AC/DC streetlights in locations where we're not able to generate enough solar to power the lights throughout the evening. So we would call option 2A the combo option. So in terms of the models that we tested, there was a variety of them. We went with a couple of models out there, and we did testing for a minimum of six months for each of these models and identified the amount of on-time for the lights throughout the evening. The, I believe, the Clearworld Retrofleq units stayed lit approximately 71% to 77% of the time. The Gridshift Siege units stayed lit approximately 87% to 88% of the time. The other units, the Fonroche and the Hapco lights, due to procurement, took a while to, for the city to receive them, and so they were able to test them for a short period of time. Due to the testing of those lights, the city staff recommended the Gridshift Predator. And so those are the lights that the city is moving towards and advancing in phase two of the testing. This map itself indicates the lights and the solar lights of the ones that are out there and that are currently being tested. The Gridshift lights, this is just a few specifications on the Gridshift light systems. They've, they have a low-profile design, there's a photocell sensor, a deep-cycle battery that will charge and discharge over 2,000 times. They work continuously, two to three rainy days, in intelligent mode, which will allow them to kind of reduce the wattage uses and to keep the lights going during those rainy days, and a bunch of other technology there. One of the interesting things with the Gridshift Predators is that they have a 5G remote access, which allows the lights to speak to one another and create kind of a grid mesh network for those lights to communicate and for that information to come back to the maintenance staff so that they know which lights are technically out versus current, with our current system, we can only be made aware of the light outages by either physical inspection or by a resident contacting us, contacting the city and letting us know. We're also able to get alerts, set timing to monitor them, control the brightness for those lights, and a variety of other things. The construction for these lights are simpler than the typical parallel system in the fact that we would not have to do any trench work. So a lot of the installation would be on the pole itself. For solar lights, the solar panels, they have a 25-year lifespan, and they, there is a replacement cycle for batteries at the moment. And so throughout the lifespan of the unit itself, we may have to swap the batteries out a couple of times. So for the next phase of our testing, we're really trying to test the Gridshift Connect component of the streetlight system. And so we are going to install a few more streetlights on another street in the Rollingwood neighborhood to see if they can communicate with one another and see if we can utilize the internet of things and try to bring components of a smart city to the City of San Bruno. So now this, there was, there was a lot of discussion, but this matrix kind of shows the pros and cons to each system. The conventional streetlight system, which is the parallel circuits that we talked about, there are obviously the pros that, is that they're reliable and proven, and they're dependable, and the maintenance costs on them are low because they're hardwired. But one of the challenges we have is in brownfield applications, which is built-out cities, the upfront investment is costly due to the complexity of the trench work that we have to do throughout, throughout the neighborhood if we were to stay with the conventional system. The solar, the solar light system allows for no trenching, easier installation, and it's, it has a low fixture maintenance, and it has smart city infrastructure like we previously discussed. And it allows us to move away from the conduits needed to, to power up these lights. One of the challenges, though, is it is pretty weather-dependent. We talked about kind of the reliability for these lighting systems, the installations, there are limitations because if you're installing a light and there's, say, trees in the area, that might not be a viable option because they'll be shaded all day. And then the lifecycle costs associated with the batteries. So you might have a more affordable upfront cost, but throughout the lifecycle, there will be some additional cost to replacing the batteries themselves. So the third model that we talked about, which is the AC/DC hybrid solar streetlighting, which is the ones that are a combination of solar-powered lights with batteries with the abilities to connect to the, to the grid to be, to also be able to power on the system. This kind of is a blend of both worlds, which allows for the reliability that you can receive from the conventional AC streetlighting system, but allows for us to reduce energy consumption from the grid, utilizing solar power whenever possible. The challenge is with the AC/DC hybrid solar streetlighting option is that, just like the conventional parallel system, there's a significant upfront cost to underground conduit in order to be able to power up the system in that manner. So we're in the process of moving forward with design, so we'll have more accurate costs as we move forward, but I wanted to kind of just provide an order of magnitude costs just so we can have a cost comparison for discussion tonight. Option one, the parallel circuit streetlights. We took the 2015 numbers, we, and we escalated to $20, $23, and that's approximately $6.3 million to replace the entire street, RO streetlight circuits in town. The solar option itself is approximately $1.8 million to be able to replace all RO streetlight systems with solar-powered lights. And then there's the option 2A, which is a combination of streetlights, solar-powered streetlights, and the AC/DC hybrid lights that can connect to the grid. This cost is not fully implemented yet. It's approximately $1.9 million, but that does not factor in the trench work, the trench work needed to complete these lights. We currently don't have those costs because we have to get further into design so we can understand which lights and which locations we may need this, and that's the only way for us to be able to identify how much trench work is needed. So in terms of funding opportunities, we were able to identify a few of these, and staff is attending the Smart Cities Connect Conference in Washington DC at the end of this month to see if there's other opportunities. But the, in October of '23, the city staff applied for the Strengthening Mobility and Revolutionizing Transportation, which is called SMART, they love their acronyms, Stage One Planning and Prototyping Grant through the Office of the Assistant Secretary for Research and Technology, called OSTR, the U.S. Department of Transportation, USDOT, for approximately $525,000 for a design effort. If that grant is awarded, there is a possibility to request for construction funds on the next phase of that. And so staff submitted that application, and we're waiting to hear back. In, in the end of this month, staff will apply and submit for an application for the EECBG, which is the Energy Efficiency Conservation Block Grant, through the Office of the State and Community Energy Programs, for approximately $75,000, and we hope to apply that to this project as well. Currently, what was funded in, at the mid-cycle of the fiscal year '21-'22 was approximately $500,000 through general fund to work through the design and see what solution we can come up with. There's currently no construction funding appropriated for this, and if we, as staff, as staff continues to look for grants, depending on timelines, they may need to return to city council for a budget appropriation for construction. In terms of the next step, with the input received tonight from this study session, staff will return to city council and follow up after the design phase is completed. As I mentioned earlier, there's currently no construction funding for this budget, and so we would have to have a discussion there. Tonight, what we're really looking for, staff and the design team has come up with an option 2A, which would, you know, looks like it's going to be the preferred alternative due to cost and the ability to get streetlights operational sooner for the upfront costs. But we would love to hear council's feedback on each one of these options and what their thoughts are, or anything else that you would desire to discuss.
So with that, I'm open to any questions that you may have.
Thank you very much for the report. Questions from colleagues at this time for the director?
First, thank you. Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Councilmember Medina.
Yes, and thank you. Thank you, Director Lee. I also want to thank you for all the answers you provided to the questions I submitted earlier today. I know I didn't give you too much time, but it seems like currently a neighborhood's out of light, and people don't, don't, don't really like to be in the dark, right, for obvious reasons. So at 87% and 88%, is there a likelihood that it'll get much better, or is the technology yet there to make it 100%? And this is currently without the backup system, because it seems like that's what the problem is, is that there's, the panels aren't getting enough light to power up the battery to let it burn all night. So if, if, if the manufacturer's kind of saying, hey, that's about as good as it's going to get, you got to have that backup system, then that's good to know. But I think the most important thing, as we've been having this happen for a number of years now, is that we can't wait for it to be perfect. And if we have the opportunity, and based on the cost here of installing the lights at all the locations of the 56 units, I'd like to see that option. There is a potential opportunity with Peninsula Clean Energy as they're looking at their additional grants, and one of the things that they're looking at is solar lights. So that may be another potential grant opportunity. But getting, getting the locations that are out and getting those lit, and then, that's 27% of the lights that are on this RO circuit, and who knows how much longer they're going to last, right? It's totally unpredictable. So I just really wanted to thank you for the effort that you've already made in showing that this, this is a viable option that's not yet perfect, but waiting for perfect will take too long. So thank you.
Quick question, then we'll go to the Vice Mayor. How are we keeping the communities, the affected neighborhoods, updated? Obviously, it's been a while for some, as we well know, but I mean, how are we communicating once our outreach to say, you know, we're trying? We just tried to put them back on, and let me tell you, the safety element, and it's burning out elsewhere. I mean, it's hard to explain the whole RO system, but as far as folks not reaching out to others, but that we're trying to keep them in the loop as well?
Yeah, so one of the challenges that we have is reaching out directly to the specific individuals, but we do notify them through SB Response that there is an outage when they do come in, make a request to have that repaired done. If they send an email to any of our city staff, we kind of update them on the system as well. I find that, you know, after probably about three weeks, the residents actually don't care what the problem is, they just want it back on. I think one of the challenges is that it's very frustrating for residents to hear that we have an antiquated system and troubleshooting takes, the timing that troubleshooting takes, right, just because we're in a time where we're able to identify things and issues really quickly. The challenge with the RO system itself is that there, when you have a short or you have a burnt wire, you're physically going to have to find it. There's not, there's not a lot of means and mechanisms that allow you to kind of pinpoint what's underground and where it's broken. But we do, when a resident calls and is concerned about it, we do let them know right away. We have a system internally with, with the city manager's office where we provide We have a system internally with the city manager's office where we provide them frequent updates every time something happens, and when someone comes and inquires about it, we'll tell them about it. Our goal is not to post it, say, on social media so that everyone can see which neighborhood is out of lights, but we do try to respond when people inquire.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Hamilton?
So just to make sure I completely understand the 2A option, so at a high level, solar, replacing all the ROs with solar where possible, but then in these areas where there's not enough light, too much of an elevation being shaded by an adjacent forest grove or whatever, using direct power for those?
Correct. So the solar whenever possible, which means we're going to go solar whenever it's possible. Sometimes if a, say, a tree is shading a specific streetlight, we're going to have to look into it to see if we can maybe shift the streetlight over five feet and bypass that. If that is then not possible through the solar study, then we would, I won't say coalesce, but then we would go with the option, with the AC/DC option, to see if we can plug it in and to generate that power as needed to light it all night.
Okay, thank you. And then for this next test that you let us know about going down Rollingwood, Rollingwood currently is not out, or is it?
No, it's not out.
So I'm just wondering if there's any opportunity to do the testing in an area where they're out, so at least, you know, those folks aren't still in the dark, even if it's just a test. I'm just wondering if that's an opportunity. I understand why Rollingwood was picked, and you were very clear about that, because of the elevation change, and it's, you know, you kind of see all the scenarios in one place, and that might be better test data. But if there's an opportunity for us to alleviate one of the outages at the same time, I would want us to at least make sure we looked to see if there was that opportunity. And then one, just a housekeeping thing, you brought up one slide that was very helpful where it kind of showed all the, it was right before the pros and cons slide, I don't see any numbers, and then you had the overlay of the neighborhood where the testing is. On our PDF, all we see is the overlay, so all that great data is buried behind it. So if we can just get a copy of that, because having all that information in this format is much easier than the staff report, so that would just be a quick housekeeping request for later. I'm good for now.
Councilmember Alvarez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm assuming that the replacement of the streetlight will be LED?
Yes.
So are we also considering to, in addition to the grant, are we considering applying for the DOT? They have an LED program. Is that advisable for like financing program for LED streetlights?
So I believe the finance program you're describing might be through PG&E, because I think about a decade or two ago when we did the LED conversions, there was kind of like an on-bill financing. So we are exploring that option, so we're having preliminary discussions with PG&E. Obviously, solar lights is something that's pretty new technology for cities, right? And so we're trying to fit a round peg into a square hole in terms of making sure that our product or our project can qualify for certain grants, right? The one that we discussed through DOT, it's a Smart Cities grant, it's not actually a streetlight grant. So we're looking at that. There are other options, like Councilmember Medina indicated earlier. PC, we're having preliminary discussions with them in terms of what grants that are available. Obviously, with grants, there's a lot of requirements and restrictions, so we're trying to kind of balance all that out as we kind of go through design. So we are actively looking for those other funding opportunities as well.
Thank you.
Councilmember Salazar?
Thank you. Do the systems that we're looking at, do they have the ability to adjust the brightness to perhaps extend the life? Because I looked at them, and they seem like they are pretty bright, even compared to some of the other LEDs that we looked at early on. And so if that's an option for making them last longer, and then also just in terms of the modular, you know, would there be, say, an opportunity later on if they were to come out with a more efficient battery pack or something that we would be able to swap it out, or are these systems kind of integrated where you, once you buy it, you're stuck with it?
I'll take the first question. So that is a very good point and a very good catch. With these streetlights that can now be controlled via, you know, a program or even a wireless app, there is ways to adjust the brightness. And so as part of our testing, our staff actually did that. They went out there and tried to adjust the brightness to a point where we can have the lights go all night, right? And so the testing of kind of the percentages that we're talking about is them coming on at night and then people physically going out there at, say, 1:00 AM, 2:00 AM, or 3:00 AM, 5:00 AM, and just seeing if the light's still on, right? And so in the beginning, there was a lot of adjustments made, and we got to a point of equilibrium where we were able to accommodate for it. The reason why the testing went so long is because we wanted to get through the winter months where, you know, fog is heaviest, you know, light during the evening is dark, you know, doesn't last as long as it would during the summer. And so we went through kind of all those scenarios to see if it was possible. Now, obviously, it's not 100%. We're not going to be able to have those lights available, but we can tweak with the brightness to stretch them out longer. And so the interesting thing is that the systems will give you back the feedback, right, in terms of how many watts it's drawing or how many amps it's pulling and how long the battery lasts, and so we can even see the health of the battery. Now, in terms of the modular system, because it's newer technology, not all lights are built the same. I would say that the battery pack is modular compared to the lights and the system and the solar panel, but sometimes those units themselves, like, say, the light or the inverter to the light is not modular, it's part of the unit. So let's just say we were going to go with a solar light system, and then we decide, hey, we have some more money, let's put the AC power to it, let's get it so it can plug in. You're going to have to switch out that whole unit for the time being. Now, who knows? Maybe in three months, some vendors hearing this, and they're redeveloping something, they're going to come to me and tell me that they have this option, but we haven't seen it yet. So, you know, it's just emerging technology, and, you know, we're just, you know, on the forefront, there's always kind of that, those risks and challenges to being able to do the replacement. But I would say for the batteries, they should be modulating, we should be able to replace them.
One more question. I know when we did the switch from the old sodium lights to LED, we basically used the existing poles and the existing masts and just changed out the bulbs in them. And I'm wondering if part of this, because we are doing a little bit more research into it, is there an opportunity to optimize how those lights are installed or where they're installed? You did mention the potential of moving poles out of the shade to make them work better, but I always wondered when we did that, if maybe the LEDs could be mounted closer to the ground and potentially work better than the old ones? Because it seemed like the footprint of the light was a lot different for the LEDs than it was for the sodium lights. The sodium light seemed to cast out a lot farther. But we never made those adjustments, we just swapped them, and that was what was in the budget at that time. But it looks like we're getting a little smarter about how we analyze these things, and I was wondering if there's a potential there to actually rethink how we place them to optimize the amount of light that comes out of them?
There is an opportunity to rethink how we do place them, but, you know, in terms of cost effectiveness, we will definitely try not to move as many poles, you know, if it's not needed. I would say that at the time when we placed the high-pressure sodium lights to LEDs, again, the technology there was emerging at that time as well. And so we all know that LED lights don't cast a broad of a breadth of light as a high-pressure sodium would. I believe since that time, there's been emerging technology with how the LED lights are angled within the LED light heads that will allow for those foot candles. I believe if, up in some of those neighborhoods like Rollingwood, I believe we already are in an LED light system, and I believe some of these solar lights can use those same heads, we just need to switch the inverter from AC to DC power. And so I believe that the Predator is one where we kind of are using some of the existing heads that we might have out there that we can use to light them, so it should have the same type of light spread. But we can definitely look at them to see if they can cast a brighter light, but that's always been the downside of an LED light versus high-pressure sodium, and the trade-off is, you know, for energy efficiency and a variety of other matters.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you. Thought of a couple more. I appreciate the discussion. When we talk about actual implementation of this, the, one thing that would be helpful to understand, especially when, you know, having to look at these numbers, and we all know that we need to, you know, we don't have an option of just saying, oh, no, we don't want to do this, this is something we absolutely have to do. But we're currently expending money at a level I don't know to try to keep these ROs going. It would be helpful, and I'm not expecting you to have this now, but it would be helpful to know, you know, how much we've expended over the last X number of years or, you know, per year on trying to keep this antiquated system going, because that, obviously, that would be, those would be funds that we would stop expending, and it makes it a little bit more palatable to expend these funds. The other thing, too, is, and I'm sure you guys are already thinking about this already, but when we do do the implementation, especially if we're using, going with the 2A option where it's a combination of pure solar and having to do the trenching and all of that for the ones that where we can't do solar, I would want us to focus on where this outage is first, and perhaps even if there's a particular area where we're going to have to trench and do all that extra work, and it's going to take more time, maybe we just put up a straight solar there just to get that neighborhood lit as soon as possible, knowing that we're going to, knowing that that one might go out by 4:00 AM on foggy days, because that's better than it being dark all the time. And then, of course, going back and replacing it with an AC/DC one, you know, once the trench work can be done. So, thank you.
Okay, thank, Councilmember Medina, does anybody else, because this is my going to be my last call after this? Okay, Councilmember Medina?
Great. So I appreciate the question about the streetlight height. We do have a Measure G project, I just looked it up, that we have money set aside for that, so when we do allow this study to go forward, that if a streetlight, the pole had to get replaced, and if it was beneficial for it to be lowered to allow that efficiency in turning down the energy and the brightness of the lamp, then that's something that staff would go ahead and do. I reexamined the question that staff has for us, and there's some funding. So we've been talking about these RO circuits for a number of years, and maybe the question is, do we have enough funding, or where would the funding come from to replace the 56 streetlights and turn them into the solar? Because the ones that we're talking about to continue the study aren't in that area. So it's not really solving the problem, and so I think we should move forward with replacing a number of those lights, and staff can maybe get back to like how many they should be replaced, but just waiting, it's really, I think, it's, we have a semi-viable solution now. And any of those streetlights that maybe don't work out there, is the question is if they were to be at a sunnier part of town, that they would stay on 98% of the time? I mean, that's the manufacturer's question. But I think the opportunity is now, and there are one-time funds, and there's reserve funds, and we need to light up that neighborhood. So that's trying to figure out how we proceed from here with the study information that we already have. And maybe asking the city manager of how we do that.
Yeah, so the...
You're doing the presentation. If you need somebody else to respond, I'll leave that to you.
Yeah, I'll start first with what I think the question is. The question is, you know, staff is asking kind of for feedback, but we know that there's no funding. I think the feedback that we're asking for is that we want to know where we should have the designer go with the design. We could spend, we could spend all our money and have them design both options, right? One is the parallel circuit, which is the expensive one that we know is more reliable, and the other one would be option 2A, which is, you know, get solar lights wherever you can, and if it's needed, we'll connect with this AC/DC units. And so, you know, our recommendation would probably be to go with 2A just because of the cost effectiveness and the fact that we have a somewhat viable solution now, it's not 100%, but allow us, like Council, like Vice Mayor Hamilton stated, you know, it's something now to get the lights up and going to move forward in that manner. And so that's the initial response to that question. I believe the second question was how we could use the funding and what we can do to apply to these lights. And as I stated earlier, there's a variety of funding sources, we're looking at everything. Just the challenge is, there's not a lot of grants out there for solar-powered lights, right? So we're trying to fit a round peg in a square hole for these grants to see what we can get and acquire. There are a lot of LED light solutions out there, but that's for you to convert from a high-pressure sodium light to an LED light or some other thing. If we're already on LED lights in some of these areas, those grants don't apply. And so we're just looking. I can defer to City Manager McIntyre if he has anything else to add.
Certainly. If I can, Mr. Mayor. I think what the CFO just shared with you earlier is, we do have money. If you want, if this is a priority, we do have money, we just won't do other things or we will draw down our reserves lower than the target reserves that we have set up. This becomes a council priority question and a direction question. A question I did ask of Public Works Director Lee was, even if the council said, for example, next month, because we would come back to you on December 12th with this question, you know, how long would it take for us to acquire and install? Because I don't think you go to the hardware store and just buy these. I think this is a, so this is probably a months-long process, and we may be back to summer again before these things are actually fully installed. And that's my speculation, to be very clear, and perhaps things could move more quickly, but I think the expectation that somehow the lights will be back on in a quasi-permanent manner, quasi-permanent meaning the solar manner, you're probably months out still. And I just want to make sure the council understands what that sort of honest delivery is likely to be.
Let me just see if there's, because this will be a third time. Let me just see if there's any members of the public. I don't see any, but I just want to double check since now we do have some folks here just to ensure that I do get that off my checklist. There are none at this time, so please, Vice Mayor.
I'm only bringing this up now because we were just talking about funding and potential issues there. Could we phase the project so that we would, instead of having to expend, you know, 1.9 million all at once, that we focus on the outages first, do those areas in a Phase 1, and then come back to replace the areas that are still RO but functioning, and replace those in a Phase 2 down the road?
The answer is yes, we can phase them. There might be some additional associated costs with kind of mobilization and, you know, bulk purchasing. But the one thing that we do need to do is we need to just jump into the design right away. You can always phase the implementation, but the planning and design effort needs to be done all at once, and that's really what we're, after tonight, we're going to move forward with, with full steam.
Great, thank you.
So again, as was asked for, to provide feedback, which I think we've done on the preferred option of option 1, 2, 2A, or 3, so just so we can, so the staff goes away feeling that they've heard something. Marty, you kind of, I'm sorry, Councilmember Medina, you've already kind of made it clear it was 2A? Okay, I'm sorry.
2A.
2A.
I would definitely prefer option 1, but it sounds like 2A is the only one that we could reasonably move forward with, so.
Councilmember Alvarez? Which option?
Yeah, the option 2A.
Okay.
Move forward.
So you're hearing 2A. Okay, so I wanted to make sure. You asked...
Okay, so I wanted to make sure you asked and you received your feedback. Okay. With that, thank you again, Director Lee. And with that, we will go ahead and adjourn this special council meeting to the next regular City Council meeting, which will be held tonight at 7:00 PM. And so with that, we will adjourn the special session.